And we'll move on to the final meeting of the night, which is the Committee of the Whole, chaired by Councilmember Chandra Bishop.
If the clerk is ready, I can call this meeting to order with a roll call. Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. There are no minutes to approve, not that I know of. There are no additions to the agenda. And next item is public input. Is there anyone who would like to address this special Committee of the Whole meeting?
Thanks. I want to read an email that was requested to be read aloud from Julie Watkins. First note, if announcement is going to be made reminding the public that there's no opportunity for public input on Wednesday and Thursday of the ARPA presentation meetings, then please omit reading this email at the meeting tonight. To the Urbana City Council, I think there may be confusion caused by how the meeting agenda links via city calendar websites for the Tuesday through Thursday ARPA presentations meeting. The third item on the agenda is public input, even if I click on the link on the calendar for Thursday. Also, if the time for public input is going to be limited, I think this was mentioned, I believe a heads up to the public when you announce about the various presentations, that information about public input is included, and no opportunity for public input Wednesday or Thursday. Julie Watkins, Urbana resident.
Thank you. With no other public input, we'll move on to staff report? No staff report? Okay, new business. First up, ordinance number 2022-12-050, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five omnibus from HR.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So, I will be going over the fifth budget amendment. I will answer any questions at the end. So, under general operating fund, so the police department received donation and grants, so these will be budgeted to reflect revenues and expenses. Last year, the city receives a donation for tree planting, so we are carrying over any remaining funds to this fiscal year's budget. And then in public works, we are using savings from staffing vacancies to use outside services and to also pay for software and technology upgrades. So, one is the GIS on-call services, and this is to assist the GIS specialists in strategy development and implementing a better way to organize and manage our data. And then, the next one there is Lucity. This is the work management system that the city has been using. So, we are gonna do some software enhancement. And then, the next thing regarding public works policies and procedures assistance, I would like to make some clarifications. So, of that $50,000 that we are reallocating from vacancy savings, 20,000 will be used for policy revisions and updates, and then the 30,000 is to pay for temporary admin assistance through contractual services. And then, in the capital replacement and improvement fund, we are reprioritizing funds from sidewalk maintenance project to pay for traffic engineering study. And then, under landscape recycling fund, in summary, we are just requesting to increase LRC's budget to file and remit taxes on items sold that are subject to sales tax. And then, community development grants fund, so the city has been awarded a grant that will be used to fund for ILEAS rehabilitation project. So, this will be budgeted under this community development grants fund, and of the $3 million grant, 25,000 will be allocated for admin costs. So, this will increase revenues in the community development special fund. And then, we are using $25,000 from the CDBG Fund Sidewalks Project to fund for the traffic studies project. And then, TIF II, this will end December 31st of this year. So, this amendment will revise estimates and transfer the entire balance to Central TIF. And so, several positions previously funded through TIF II will be reassigned to Central TIF. And then, so the process of closing TIF II and distribution of funds will be discussed in more detail on the next agenda item. And then lastly, under equipment services fund, we are reallocating and spent wages from the vacant certified mechanic position to use outside services to assist with staffing issues. And I think that is the end of this budget amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mary Alice?
My question primarily is for Tim, and I see him sitting back there, so if you wouldn't mind joining us. So, there are two items in this budget amendment that take funds from sidewalk maintenance and put it into traffic studies. And given the nature of our sidewalks, I'm wondering what the rationale is behind that move?
The move of that actually was queued up, I believe, from the EQL comments that came in, as we had a lot of requests for some various traffic and sidewalk enhancements and things of that nature. And what it necessitated was for us to do a little bit more robust in-depth study before we prioritized certain project areas that were identified in the EQL project.
So, for some reason, 100,000 keeps sticking in my head, but how much do we have in the sidewalk maintenance? I mean, how much should we generally budget?
I think that's about right, but that's been a pretty flexible number since I've been here, because I think it was less before, and then we were at 100,000 at one point, and then we talked about 200,000 at one point, but then backed off that, I believe, in the CIP.
It's been at 100,000 for a while.
Yeah. I'm not sure off the top of my head, but, you know, some of this is because of the EQL project triggered a lot of sidewalk, street lighting, and then traffic studies that came up. Some of that stuff was CDBG eligible things, and some of it was not. And what we've tried to do is utilize the CDBG funds that were ineligible areas to try to help facilitate some of that stuff. And some of these sidewalk enhancements, the traffic studies need to have, we have to conduct traffic studies before we can continue to talk about what we're going to do in some of these locations that were identified.
So, the first one was for $15,000 on Vine and Water Street, which is basically that entrance to Schnucks, right?
Correct.
Was that on the EQL, that sidewalk area?
I don't know that that was on EQL specifically.
That's, I didn't think I saw that on EQL. I guess, I mean, I can understand the need for traffic studies to figure out what to do on some of those EQL projects, but the one that kind of rose a red flag to me was that.
Yeah, and that one, I think, has, we've, I know prior to me coming onboard, there was a traffic study at Main and Vine.
Yes.
And obviously, we had the accident that occurred at Vine and Water within the last year. And what we wanted to do was try to conduct a more robust traffic study of that whole area. So, we've got the intersection at Main and Vine, and we wanted to kind of further that down to look at the entire corridor through there.
And what could we potentially do? I think that the recommendations from the Main and Vine were there was nothing to be done.
Correct. Yeah, and I think potentially, things that could happen are much larger drastic things, looking all the way up through, like, to University at some point, you know. Some of the challenges we have through that area are, is we have a Water Street essentially dead-ending at Vine Street, and it's not necessarily a nice contiguous route for people, but it gets used because people leave Schnucks or try to get to Schnucks and don't want to walk up to the intersection. That's controlled. So, we're looking at some of that stuff and trying to look at potentially even some vertical site distances and things like that, because we also, it's a really challenging corridor, because we have University Avenue, then we have the rail bridge, then we have Water Street, then we have Main Street right there. And what we're trying to do is look at a little bit more robust picture of what that looks like, rather than isolating it on singular intersection. We want to kind of move that down a little bit more in that corridor and look at a broader spectrum down, well, I guess further north from the Main Street intersection.
But this is piecemeal, right? So, we're not going beyond Water Street.
Correct.
And where are we right now with sidewalk replacement? How well are we doing with that right now?
Pretty good. I know that we have bid the first round of sidewalk replacement projects. That's slated to begin as soon as possible. Actually, the contractor just dropped off the notice of award forms today to do the first round of some of that stuff. The idea is trying to get some of that stuff spent within the CDBG timeline. So, that one is actually, the first slate is going very well, I would say.
And you're talking about the EQL projects?
Correct.
But beyond the EQL projects, I mean, sidewalk repair and maintenance, it doesn't seem to be high priority sometimes.
And that's a fair statement. You know, you look at everything else we're doing. We're trying to implement the CIP as best we can, but, you know, we're still building staff, which is part of the challenge. So, what we've developed in the last year is a sidewalk priority program, which I think John shared with you guys at the CIP meeting, because what we would get is we get calls, and we don't have a hierarchy for how we address these calls. But that's what that was meant to develop. And now, we do have that. So, we have the EQL stuff. We also have our own prioritization list. And what we're trying to do is do as much of that as we can, you know.
So, have some of those been included in the requests for?
I presume so, but I don't know that specifically. John's been handling that. The answer is everything's coming in, and it's prioritized accordingly. The EQL stuff was more specialized.
Sure.
But any other sidewalk complaints that come in, they go through the same prioritization process, and then we build it. The intent is to build out annual contracts, so we can do large, larger scale improvements, rather than trying to do, you know, a small repair here, a small repair there, do one large contract and get economy of scale, essentially.
I just hate the fact that we're constantly begging and stealing from the sidewalk one when there's obvious sidewalks that need to be repaired in the city. All right, thank you.
I will say that the Water Street study came out of Traffic Commission, because someone had submitted that, because people are crossing from that bus stop over to Schnucks, and there's no pedestrian safety. That's why this traffic study came about, which was approved by Traffic Commission. So, I will say that. It's more about the safety of pedestrians crossing from that bus stop going over to Schnucks and vice versa. So, any other questions for? I completely blinked on your name.
Alianna, or Ally?
Sorry.
Thank you. Thanks. I had some questions I'm trying to understand here about Central TIF. I see, I understand the part about transferring, porting from TIF II, if that's approved later tonight or next week. I'm looking at the original budget on the Central TIF fund statement account, if that's the right words. And there's this miscellaneous revenue of 5.5 million, and then the contractual services of 6.5 million in expense. And I don't know if you could clarify, I'm imagining that some Hotel Royer stuff is included in the expenditure, but I'm not sure what the miscellaneous revenues are versus, we have transfer in of 500, but miscellaneous revenues of 5.5 million.
I think that was probably the bond proceeds, from the bonds that we were gonna issue to pay the developers on completion of the project.
Okay. So, for the bond, and then it's also as the expense under the contractual services?
Correct. So, when we issue bonds and we receive all that money, that's a revenue, and then when we pay the developer, that's an expense. So, yeah, it has to all flow through.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions? Yes, Drea?
I guess it's not a question, actually. I just wanted to reinforce what Mary Alice said. I also am concerned to see money coming out of sidewalks for other purposes, not that traffic studies aren't important. I know that some of the EQL projects are related to the fact that we have parts of our city that don't even have sidewalks, much less repairing them. So, just to add my concern to that.
I have a question. The tree planting, why wasn't all of that done? I guess there wasn't, it's less, a little over $10,000 spent out of that donation for planting trees.
It's just a timing issue, right? So, we received that donation in fiscal year '22, so probably, you know, with staffing issues and all that, it wasn't spent all. And so, we're just planning to spend that this fiscal year's budget.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Listening to Ms. Wilkins read the comments from Citizen, I don't want anyone to be disillusioned about what's going on with the meetings this week. Public input will be able to be dealt with tomorrow. Each person that wishes to address the council will get three minutes. Public input tomorrow will be capped at 30 minutes. The reason why it's not on every agenda is because at the end of the meeting tomorrow, the meeting's not over. We will recess it from tomorrow to the following day. And the public input, as far as it's going to go, will only be done tomorrow and will not follow the rest of the week. So, if there's any concerns, then they can call me at the clerk's office, and maybe I can explain it a little better. Okay?
Thank you. So, if there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
I'd move for ordinance number 2022-12-050, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five omnibus. We moved on to City Council for approval.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Sharice and seconded by James to move ordinance number 2022-12-050, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five omnibus, on to City Council for approval on the regular agenda. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2022-12-051, an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the City of Urbana Tax Increment Redevelopment Project Area, TIF II.
Good evening. This ordinance is to terminate TIF II, which is due to expire at the end of 2022. TIF II was established in December of 1986 with an initial equalized assessive valuation of about 9.8 million. TIF II funds were instrumental in incentivizing many projects in Urbana, including the Five Point Developments of two commercial strip shopping centers and multiple outlaw buildings after the successful relocation of the car dealership to North Cunningham Avenue. TIF funds were also used to purchase and consolidate properties north of the city building, which led to the development of the 200 Vine Street town homes. Other TIF II funds were used to incentivize the construction of the Patel Law Office on University Avenue, as well as multiple small business startups. TIF II grants were used to pay off debt for improvements to Boneyard Creek, as well as support the Urbana Arts and Culture Program. In earlier years, TIF II, along with TIF I, was instrumental in the establishment of the Urbana Crossing Schnucks Shopping Complex, the construction of the Five Points Commerce Center, including Walgreens, renovations for Lincoln Square Village, and the creation of major streets to gate enhancements in the downtown area. The goal of any TIF is to increase the EAV of the property it encompasses in order to increase the property tax allocation to each taxing body. At the end of 2021, TIF II's EAV was calculated at 19.3 million, an increase of 197%, representing the success of the district. So, about two months ago, you guys passed an ordinance that we amended the boundaries of Central TIF, which allows us to port funds, which you just approved. And so, tonight, our final legislative act with TIF II is to pass this ordinance to close it out at the end of this year.
Are there any questions? Okay, Grace.
Sorry if you already mentioned it, and I missed it tonight, but I don't know if you could talk a little bit more about the comparisons. I'm looking at, you sent us an email of the other TIF's growth throughout that time period. I didn't know if there was anything else you could explain to kind of give a reference for that growth in this TIF area.
Oh, I just sent that to you, because that was your question. I didn't respond to everyone else. So, just kind of to show the history of the growth, is that kind of what you were interested? Yeah. So, when TIF II was created, the base EAV was about 9.8 million. By 2016, it was up to around 11.4. In 2019, it had grown to about 17.1 million, leading us to 2021's EAV, which was 19.3. And we haven't received the 2022 EAV yet for TIF II, but I would expect that to go up. So, just a little bit from the 19.3. So, that's the goal of any TIF we create, to try to increase that EAV while the city has the ability to use the increment, so that when it's done, each taxing body gets more money. So, that 19.3, and hopefully a little bit more, will be going back on the tax rolls, so each of the taxing bodies should, will see a nice increase in their taxes this year, tax revenue.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the history for that. And I just thought we'd also talked about having a general comparison, like what was the overall EAV now versus then? But I don't know if it would also make sense that there was too many variables and changes for that to be a relevant comparison.
Yeah, I haven't been able to pull a general EAV for, like, the whole community. I'm hoping to gather a lot of information before our TIF Joint Review Board meeting, which will be in January, February of '23, because the other thing we kind of realized as we were talking this through, is the boundaries of TIF II also were amended and changed from the creation. So, even that increased value could be on lesser landmass than was originally created with TIF II. So, I'm hoping to do a deeper dive into research, so we can show more of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion. Don't be shy.
I'll move ordinance number 2022-12-051, an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the City of Urbana Tax Increment Redevelopment Project Area, TIF II. It's a recommendation for approval for City Council.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Councilmember Colacetti and seconded by Hersi to move ordinance number 2022-12-051, an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the City of Urbana Tax Increment Redevelopment Project Area, TIF II, on to City Council for approval on the regular agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, sorry, discussion.
Go ahead, Grace.
I just wanted to say, in the meeting, about some things we talked about when we met about this with staff, was also about not losing sight of Cunningham TIF and being sure that we can reevaluate that original plan and use those remaining funds in that TIF before it expires soon to benefit that area, and particularly some of the beautification and aesthetics matching downtown with whatever limitations there are. But I just wanted to throw that out publicly, too, that that was something that we're also kind of aware of and looking into, and something that I'd like to push for Cunningham TIF benefiting as well. And we'd also discussed the possibilities that since Central TIF and Cunningham TIF are also now touching, that, you know, if there's money remaining in the Central TIF after we do all of these big ambitious projects in Central TIF, then funds can be transferred to Cunningham if needed for any other things there. But they've got a decent fund balance of 2 point some million, right? So, I look forward to that, and I hope that we can also really focus on Cunningham TIF before it expires as well. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, will the clerk call the roll, please? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Steph. Next on the agenda is council input and communication. Again?
Thanks. Just wanted to mention in response to the email we received and some of the clerk's clarifications, that, also with media inquiries, that this week, there's presentations only about ARPA stuff and no decisions being made, and that they're just unfortunately very short presentations, so that we can fit everyone. And so, that's why we have the limited public input only on Tuesday, as the clerk explained, because Wednesday and Thursday are continued meetings. So, anyone who wants to give public input in person has the opportunity on Tuesday only, and that's to give time for more of the presentations. And again, there's no decisions being made, so there's still time to give input on these by email. You can email thecitycouncil@urbana.urbanillinois.us, or any of us individually to give your input on email. And then, also, we'll have regular meetings on Monday the following week, and I'm sure we'll continue the discussion. And then, there will be more opportunities for public input after the fact as well. So, I just wanted to clarify again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
And to make it perfectly clear, there will be no funding allocations made before the first of the year. So, there will be plenty of opportunity for people to weigh in.
Okay. If no other input, we'll move on to ARPA presentations. The first one is Green Stormwater Infrastructure Grant Program.
Chair Bishop, I'll be moderating the ARPA presentations. I sent an email earlier today. Did you get it? So, by way of introduction, just to give a little bit of background and bring everyone up to speed, the City of Urbana has approximately $10 million in American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to allocate for qualified projects. According to the federal treasury guidelines, we have to commit the funds by December 31st of 2024 and spend them by December 31st of 2026. The city contracted with the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission to help administer the funds, to help solicit public input, and work with the city council to develop the concept plan to identify funding priorities and to guide decisions. The application was open to the public in mid-September, it closed on November 16th. The city received applications from community organizations and city departments requesting ARPA funds to address the goals and priorities of the concept plan. The eligible applications have been reviewed and scored according to the published metric. External applications were scored by city staff. Internal departmental applications were scored by RPC staff. Tonight, all the eligible, will be, begin the first of about 45 presentations that will take place over the next, tonight and the following three evenings. All eligible applicants have been invited to make a brief presentation. They'll get 12 minutes total for their presentation, and each applicant will follow the same format. The first six minutes focus on responding to three questions, and the second six minutes will be open to Q and A from city council. The applicants have also been asked to submit a one-page executive summary to share the key information about the project. So, in your binder, you have the project summaries, you have the note pages that you can take notes on and score the questions, and we'll give you a little bit more information. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank Will Kolchowski, J.D. McClanahan from RPC, Kate Levy, all the reviewers, and all the applicants for participating in this process. Did you have anything to add as far as instructions, Will?
No, that's it. 12 minutes total.
Turn your mic on.
Sorry. 12 minutes total, so at 30 seconds, you'll see the card. If you do the presentation faster than six minutes, it's still 12 minutes total, so there's just a little extra time for Q and A. So, I'll have So I'll have a timer that goes off. If the presentation's done, I'll try to turn the timer off so you don't hear two beeps. But other than that, all you have to do is press the down button to go to the next slide and ready to begin.
And in your binder, you have a page titled Council Mayor Presentation Notes, and that's where you can, the three questions are listed and the scoring metric. So you may begin.
Great, thank you. My name is Carmen Franks. I am the Assistant City Engineer with the Public Works Department, and thank you for the opportunity for speaking to you tonight about green stormwater infrastructure. I'm going to dive right in, because I have a lot to talk about. But first, I'm showing you what our stormwater management looks like in the city right now. So these are detention basins. You may or may not be familiar with these. I just want to give you some more background on this, because I didn't really cover it a lot in my application, and maybe not everyone is well-versed in stormwater management. So this is kind of the status quo for stormwater management here. So why do we do this? Sorry. So first of all, why do we do this? The short answer is because we have to for our permit with the Illinois EPA. So we care about water quality and water quantity. And what these detention basins do is they slow stormwater runoff down. So basically, as any area develops, less water can infiltrate into the ground because there's more impervious surfaces, from rooftops of buildings, from sidewalks, driveways, parking lots, et cetera. So less water infiltrates, more runs off the surface, and it sends these higher flows to our stream banks, which erode our streams and carry pollutants to them, and that degrades water quality, which impacts our aquatic ecosystems. So these are what we're doing today. But there are some issues with these, right? So maybe they're not the most aesthetically pleasing. This is kind of a variety of what you would see in the city, from basins that hold water permanently to those that hold it temporarily and release it slowly back into our sewer system or into a nearby stream. So from the upper right, you can see kind of the worst-case scenario, and this is actually just outside of city limits, where you'd get a pond that is just laden with nutrients, and you get an algal bloom, and those, the algae dies, it sucks up the oxygen in the water, and fish die. And it's just terrible ecologically, it's an eyesore, it's probably pretty smelly. From the one beneath it, which is kind of our best-case scenario in the city, which is well-maintained, you might not even notice that it's there, it's just a depressed lawn area, it holds water back, it absorbs some water into the ground, but the rest releases through pipes underground or nearby. Best-case scenario, it's really just turf lawn, so you're not getting a lot of ecological benefit out of this, you're not getting a lot of infiltration into the ground, you're not getting a variety of species that promote habitat. And kind of somewhere in between are the ones on the left, where you might see water standing for a long period of time that shouldn't be there, you might get mosquitoes breeding, or you just see a lot of weeds growing and trash build up. So there has to be a better way, right? So that's what I'm here to talk to you about, is green infrastructure. Oh, and another thing I wanted to touch on is, even in the best-case scenario, these take up a lot of space. So space that is only used for stormwater management. So this isn't bringing any revenue to the city tax-wise, but if we can replace this with different types of facilities that take up less space, more space could be used for other townhouses or businesses or things that bring in taxes to the city. So just by example, this bottom right, ideal scenario for detention basin still takes up over 32,000 square feet. So in the zone that this is in, it's about three and a half lots. So if you replace that with just townhomes, because this is in a residential area, the average taxes in this zone are about, for 2019 numbers, were 37 cents per square foot. So if you do the math here, you could bring in over $12,000 just on this site alone per year. If you scale this up to the whole city, we've got over 180 detention basins in the city that takes up 5.8 million square feet just for the basin alone. That doesn't even include the area outside of it that you need for safety reasons. Multiply that by the 37 cents per square foot, and you could bring in over $2 million per year in tax revenue, just a rough estimate there. Okay, so what can we replace these with? What is green infrastructure? So these can be, basically they're areas designed to manage stormwater, but do it in a way that more closely mimics the natural water system, the natural water cycle. So these can be planted areas, like all these examples here, and these are all pictures that I've taken, so I can certainly tell you more about them in the questions, if you have questions on them. But these are examples of rain gardens and bio retention here. So these are planted areas, and what you're not seeing here is really the magic that's happening underground. So these are different from just a typical landscaped area, they've got engineered soil mixes and stone underground that absorb and hold a lot more stormwater. So you're getting this stormwater management, but you're getting also this planted and often beautiful system that promotes habitat and can be more of a park-like space in these settings. So these are bio retention, rain gardens, kind of stormwater basins that are more planted. You can also have permeable pavements. So these are examples of pervious concrete and porous asphalt. They operate just like the standard concrete and asphalt, except that they're made slightly differently so that they're porous and water is allowed to seep through them and be stored underground, as well as permeable pavers here. So some more examples here, we've got green walls, green roofs, a couple of these images I've stolen from online, also rainwater harvesting and cisterns. And on the bottom left is a constructed stormwater wetland. So you can see these can manage stormwater, but do it in a lot less space and provide a lot more ecological benefits than our detention basins. All right. So just in time for my last slide, answering your questions here, what is the lasting impact hope to reduce the number of detention basins with green stormwater infrastructure that provides, you know, triple bottom line benefits, the social, ecological, and economic benefits? And I've listed those in your executive summary. We would also have reduced stress on our current system because we'd be absorbing more water into the ground rather than sending it into our storm sewers. We're expanding green infrastructure in the community, which is a council mayor goal, and we'd be providing a more resilient infrastructure.
Excuse me, but we are going to move on to Q and A.
I apologize.
Six minutes are left.
Okay. And I'll take any questions.
Start with Mary Alice.
I have two questions. Am I allowed two or are we just doing one?
One.
Okay, I'm going to give you 30 seconds to go ahead and finish what you were going to say.
Oh, thank you so much. I was just addressing the questions that we were required to present upon. The final one is why we're confident that these funds could be used in accordance with the federal guidelines and achieve these results in a required timeline. I've stolen the answer from my boss, Tim, who's going to be speaking right after me. So we have highly qualified city staff that has a proven track record of managing funds for similar programs. Thank you. Yes.
Chris, we'll go to Chris if you have a question.
Where primarily do you want to do these projects?
That's a great question. So for this grant program, I'm proposing that we start with private developers. So they are the property owners that are installing these detention basins as their stormwater management requirements, like the city code requires them to manage stormwater. So I'm proposing that they can apply to the city for these grant funds and put them on their properties. So they would be going onto private properties. Yes.
I guess my question was going to be regarding the pictures that you showed at the front? No, no, go back.
Yeah.
And you were talking about this one area that where townhomes could be built. So is that a hope for you, or will there be cisterns underneath? Will the developer, will you require developers to basically put in green stormwater kind of stuff?
Yeah, so great question. I think that this program could be for any new development that, or any redevelopment where they're required to meet the stormwater management requirements. So instead of building a new detention basin, they can apply for these funds that would help them install green infrastructure. Or in some of these cases, the detention basins are in such need of repair that they would need to be reconstructed, and instead of reconstructing a new detention basin, they could, you know, build green infrastructure instead. Do something like the, you know, cisterns or a rain garden or green roofs, permeable pavement, any of these types of infrastructure that will promote management of stormwater in a more natural way.
You answered my question, so I'll go on to Jaya.
Thank you, and thanks for your presentation. If this project was chosen, but the full amount requested was not granted, do you have a plan for what you would do with some portion of it?
Yes, so I've asked for $1.1 million, and the point one is like for staff funding to get the program going, to set up guidelines for grantees, for how they use, how they design these facilities, how they apply for the program. The $1 million is for designing, constructing, and providing some timeline of maintenance on these. And I've modeled this somewhat after a program that's in existence in Northeast Ohio. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District gives away $2 million approximately per year for green infrastructure projects, and they've been doing it since 2014, I believe. Around 50 green infrastructure projects were built, and they give, oh, my math is probably going to be off here, but they've been giving an average of 180,000 per project, and that is to design, construct, and maintain for one year. And these are large-scale projects, so it's a larger property owner that would be putting in, you know, the equivalent of a detention basin. But they might do a permeable pavement, parking lot, or a green roof, or like the green wall that I showed on the slides was from one of those Northeast Ohio projects. Sorry if that was longer than 30 seconds.
So how many are you trying to do? Four? Four for a million dollars? Is the properties that you have in this picture? Or just in?
Oh, no, no. So not those specific projects, but I thought the equivalent, you know, the funding would be the equivalent of five large-scale projects.
Five, okay.
Yeah, no specific areas are selected, but the idea is that the first year of this, there would be the most applicants. Maybe long-term, there would only be, you know, one or two projects given out if we could continue this long-term, but in the beginning, we would plan for more.
If you could justify why are you spending ARPA funds on this as opposed to city investment if it would be $2 million in tax revenue, and if we've applied for or explored other grants or funding options?
There, so there isn't city money set aside?
You have about 10 seconds to finish up.
So yeah, we currently have a stormwater utility fund, but that is set up to take care of the infrastructure that the city currently maintains. So our storm sewers that are currently in place, that is not money set aside for new green infrastructure projects.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And will the next applicant come forward? And that will be the, oh, the applicant is forward and ready. Okay. This will be the sanitary sewer lateral lining pilot program.
Good evening, everybody. I'll speak quickly. So this is a program that I have an interest in pursuing. We are already utilizing this type of technology on our sewer mains. One thing that's become evident is, you know, finding ways to, you know, expand assistance outside of our sewer-owned mains. Common complaints we get are, you know, most private property owners aren't necessarily sanitary sewer experts, so operating and maintaining, inspecting, and all of that stuff is not coming second-hand to them. We already operate other sanitary sewer lateral reimbursement programs for the pavement reimbursement. We have a cross-connection program to help disconnect cross-connections. The idea would be to try to extend what we feel is a very cost-effective rehabilitation method out into some of these private sewer laterals. Ideally, the initiation of this would be to target 144 sanitary sewer laterals, which is about 1% of all the laterals within the city, targeting the Dr. Ellis subdivision to start. This subdivision, the infrastructure is of the age and condition that is getting to the point where it warrants this type of rehabilitation, as is evident, because I think we've already lined a little over 80% of the sewer mains within that area. It's also in a qualified opportunity zone and had qualifying tract. The request was for $1.3 million. That number was generated from talking with some other lateral lining contractors and the City of Decatur, who's implemented a similar program. The schedule would be to try to complete this in FY '24 and '25. Again, some of the background, some of the benefits, I guess, that I would say for this from a private property owner's perspective would be it's proactive rehabilitation rather than waiting for a failure to occur. It would be managed by city staff, engineering staff with the expertise to implement this type of program, and it would reduce potential for unforeseen critical failures that most people aren't prepared to pay for off of the cuff. Some other enhancements is it enhances connections to our collector sewers, which is a common failure point. It also reduces infiltration into the pipes from groundwater, which is water that doesn't need to be treated, but that increases the wear and tear on our system and then the pumping stations. And then it also reduces electrical operating costs from the infiltration elimination with this type of stuff for the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district that operates all the pump stations and the wastewater treatment plant itself. Some of the lasting impacts after the ARPA funds are out is, you know, extend the life and improve condition of sewer infrastructure. Informed enhancements on our existing rehabilitation programs, is this a program that we could find a way to continue to support? And is it supported, you know, by the community? You know, UCSD, the city, and, you know, obviously private properties would kind of, we would have to kind of gauge what we think the success would be of implementing this, and then what would the financial restrictions be on this? Would we be able to support this 100% or would be able to support a portion of this in the future? Why would this project be the best use of ARPA funds? It's a proven technology. We have used it. We have about 25% of our entire sanitary sewer systems are already lined. Staff are well-equipped to ensure the successful implementation of this, and it proactively mitigates public health concerns from potential sewer backups from sewer failures. It also aligns with the council infrastructure strategy for the mayor and council goals recently published. And the pilot program of this scale may not be feasible without an injection of funding like the ARPA funds. We probably wouldn't be able to try to pursue 100% of this. We would have to do either a smaller portion or even smaller sections. They have small things called T-liners, where you just do the first five feet, which would solve the connection, but doesn't necessarily solve the entirety of the solution. One fact I wanted to share, so we have the lateral reimbursement program for pavements. The average cost of those over the years has been about $9,000, well, $8,700. The average cost of lining, the entirety of a line, rehabilitating it hopefully effectively for another 60 years, is about the same cost as a single-spot repair within a paved section. So the city on average is paying about 60% of those costs right now with our pavement reimbursement program. That would be something that we would kind of study out of this, is to see if there's a sweet spot in which the city and private properties and UCSD could partner up on this thing to make it an effective program for all. And the benefit to that is we're rehabilitating an entire section and not just a spot repair. You know, right now, we're paying the same cost to repair five or 10 feet of sewer versus rehabilitating an entirety of 50 or 60 feet of these things. So why are we confident that we can get this done? Like Carmen said, we have the proper city staff that are trained to do this, and we have staff that are used to administering grant funds, federal grant funds, and making sure that all of the proper things are done to make that work. I don't think I have anything else for you, so I would just entertain questions.
James, your turn.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. This talks about 144, approximately 1% of all laterals. Do we know how many, what percentage of the Dr. Ellis subdivision, 144, would be?
144.
That's the whole Dr. Ellis subdivision?
The entirety, yep.
Thank you.
Mary Alice.
So I'll ask the million-dollar question. What is remaining? If this project was funded, what else would not, would there be anything that's not covered by the concerns of the Dr. Ellis neighborhood?
No, this is not necessarily directly related to that, but the idea is it's rehabilitating the service laterals in an area of town that is of the age and condition that would be conducive for rehabilitation.
So it's not addressing the concerns of the?
The concerns of the Dr. Ellis subdivision are unrelated to this.
Okay.
The idea is that this is proactively rehabilitating things, so we have less critical issues and failures within the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Chris? Chris.
James asked my question.
Sharice.
Okay, because we did discuss this in a meeting. My one question is, I know that we had discussed cleanouts as well. So will this include, will this particular project include the cleanouts?
It'll be on a case-by-case basis, because it depends on if they're already pre-existing or not. Some properties have them, some do not. The nature of how this has to happen, if you're doing more than a little over five or 10-foot run in the first 10 feet of a lateral, you require some type of cleanout that you have to be able to open up to have the lateral be installed. So if there's an existing cleanout, we would probably pursue going to that cleanout. If there's not an existing cleanout, they have what's called a vaca T, where they would essentially hydroexcavate down and insert a cleanout as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll pass, go ahead, Jaya.
My question's also been asked.
So we've heard a lot about the city staff. You guys are great. But then we've also heard, like, capacity issues. How will, you all are confident that the city staff can do all of this work, 144 things?
Part of the 1.296 million would be us working with a consultant to make sure it's implemented in a timely manner.
Okay.
So we would have an internal project manager and likely than an external project manager to help manage the bidding. And there's going to be a lot of coordination efforts that are going to be required, because this is going to require sign-off from individual private property owners to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Could you re-clarify what you said about using other funds? Were you saying like pulling from the sewer reimbursement and some city money in addition to this ARPA? How funds are being used together if they are?
Yeah, so not specific, this specific ask isn't trying to do that. But the idea would be is, based on the results of this pilot program, to talk about, are there other programs like this that we want to earmark money for? Like, we have the pavement lateral reimbursement program. Or potentially utilizing some of those funds cohesively with this. But probably as part of this standalone program, we would not do that on the pilot program. But it would kind of help us inform as to how and what we want to earmark money for in the long term.
James.
So I'm just going to clarify what I've heard, that this would, in all of the laterals in Dr. Ellis subdivision, it would put in a sleeve essentially to make sure the pipe doesn't fail, up to the point of a cleanout. And if a cleanout didn't exist, we'd put one in?
Correct.
And so what that might not address is, beyond that cleanout, either new or existing, between that and the owner's house, if they have a problem there, this won't address that. That'll still be the owner's responsibility.
That's correct. But the way this is budgeted, the intent is for the cleanout to be at five foot outside of the foundation if it does not exist already.
As close as possible.
Basically, that's where we transition to internal plumbing, so.
Okay, but this eliminates the problem of tearing up the pavement, replacing the pavement, all the things of the laterals going underneath the street.
Protects us for 60 more years in theory.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Mary Alice. I didn't see, has the yellow card gone up yet? Nope, okay.
I don't have any other questions.
I'm good.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right.
Grace.
Can you just clarify what the, what is the issue that's not being addressed then? That's storm mains in Dr. Ellis that's not being addressed with this?
There's not an issue in Dr. Ellis that would relate to this. This is a rehabilitation thing. The issues that are present in Dr. Ellis are present throughout the city. It's the age and the condition of this infrastructure. It was constructed 60-plus years ago, and it's just starting to deteriorate like our mains are in that area. We lined all of our mains in that area because of the age and condition of those mains. So it would make sense that the laterals themselves are also in need of the similar rehabilitation because of the age and condition in which they were installed.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up is the student family community engagement sponsorship. Carla Boyk. You may begin.
Good evening, everyone. The City of Urbana is seeking 256,807 dollars of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding to cover the cost of sponsoring a student family and community engagement specialist position to work with Urbana High School African-American male students. The sponsorship addresses the City of Urbana ARPA goals, improve accessibility of public recreation space and youth programming, and increase support for community violence interventions. The City of Urbana's Self-Made Kings program was developed to provide support in behavioral guidance, mentorship, social-emotional learning opportunities, family-focused activities, and positive community experiences to a select group of middle and high school male students. Transitioning the program to, transitioning the program, the Urbana, to the Urbana School District, the student, family, and community engagement specialists will continue to focus on the Self-Made Kings program tenants with an emphasis on students in grades eight through six and the high school by adding an increased dedication of time, effort, and program activities. I'm coming before you today to present to you for the application of the family, the student, family, and community engagement specialist sponsorship application. Dr. Ivory Tatum, Urbana School District Superintendent, planned to be here tonight, but unfortunately, she was called away into another meeting. Additionally, I want to address the email you received today. There was a statement on the application stating that 40% of Urbana's residents were under 18 years old. That is incorrect. The 40% data point actually refers to the number of the City of Urbana's youth who reside in high violent crime areas. This provides context for the lasting impact the sponsorship will have on the Urbana community. What will be the lasting impact of this project after ARPA funds runs out? The lasting impact of this project is changing the future story of the City of Urbana's African-American male student population. The predicted outcomes listed in this slide, such as decreased gun violence, and gun violence and verbal, physical aggression incidents for students, increase in conflict resolution and peer mediation, increased graduation rates of African-American male students, and the like, lead to the students receiving the necessary tools of development to develop their future story. This sponsorship centers on the equipment, sponsors on equipping the students with vital information and resources to move beyond the circumstances of today by connecting their education through and beyond high school to their life. As students successfully achieve their goals, this reverberates far beyond the lifespan of the ARPA funding needed to build the foundation. Why would this project be the best use of the city ARPA funds? Investing in the youth of the community is the best use of the ARPA funds. To disrupt gun violence, violent crime, any plan must include strategically working with the youth of the community. In addition to the best-use reasons provided, such as focusing on one of the major goals of the City of Urbana's funding goals, focusing on sixth grade through 12th. Working with youth early in their education and connecting them to career options helps students see and know that there is a path to achieve their goals. The City of Urbana piloted the Self-Made Kings program to work with high school African-American male students, which has already realized some success. Now, there is a need to have a dedicated position specifically, holistically addressing the needs of the students' population to strengthen, expand, and scale up program outcomes. The use of funds in accordance with federal guidelines and demonstrable results in the required timeline. We believe that a three-and-a-half-year look-back period is adequate, is an adequate amount of time to collect the vital data needed for the school district to understand trends and provide guidance for continued program improvements, changes, and position absorption. Including the summer months for programming provides a bridge for students to stay connected to one another, the program, and to visit and work with higher education institutions as well as local businesses during the day.
That's all I have, and I entertain any questions that you may have. I forget where we're starting with.
Should we start with me today?
Sure.
All right. So my question is, is we did have somebody who filled this role, who actually, we've had two people in this role here in the city. So primarily, my question has to do with finances. The city has funded somebody, not with 100% in this position, but has partially funded somebody. Your funding request is for $220,000 for three-and-a-half years. So does this mean that there is a cost share? So you're asking for additional funds beyond what we already have budgeted? Or is this something else? And then my second piece of that question is that we used to have money that we would pay the participants? Does that, is that included in this as well?
Those, your first part is the funding for the position?
The individual, yes. We had city funds already set aside for this program. Is this a combination?
That was included into someone's addition, someone's salary and benefits package. They had other, I want to say, I don't want to say this. They had other duties in addition to the Self-Made Kings. And so they weren't able to give the Self-Made Kings the focus and the dedication that they needed. And so this position is, we're going to fund this person at 100% so that they can have that dedicated focus. And I believe that the monies that were set aside for the Self-Made Kings, that funding will be a part of the new, or the new community engagement coordinator position. And they will be focused in other avenues. However, this one will be dedicated specifically for the youth in the Urbana School District. And they will be assisting with other programmatic funding.
So the 220,000 is for an individual for three-and-a-half years? For one person with their benefits and everything?
With their benefits, yeah.
But nothing else for the Self-Made Kings?
Nothing for the students. That will all be incorporated by the school district.
Chris.
So when a student graduates after senior year, they're out of the program?
Yes, they would be out of the program. But the hope is to have that student already connected to some, either higher education institution or whatever they decide what their future story would look like, to plug them into those entities, either working with businesses, looking at internships, or working with, going to post-secondary education.
Sharice.
So am I to understand that there's some kind of curriculum or programming that is going to be specifically guiding the program of the Self-Made Kings now?
Yes, it will be utilizing the program, I believe, that the Urbana High School is using. I believe they have a program that they will be, the curriculum they will be using, it will encompass.
But this will target specifically young black males?
They will be absorbed into that program. The program at the high school.
Okay, and it's still called Self-Made Kings?
It will not be the Self-Made Kings.
Okay. Okay.
But it will still use the same tenants of the Self-Made Kings. They will be getting the same programming activities, but they will not be called Self-Made Kings, because the Urbana School District, they would like to expand so that they can bring in more students.
So they can bring in students of all different backgrounds?
They want to scale, no, they're specifically looking at students, sixth to eighth grade African-American, African-American male students.
Okay, thank you.
So when Self-Made Kings was here at the city, it was more or less a pilot program. Our community engagement coordinator typically had six to eight young men involved. Do you have an estimate of how many students would be included in the program as it transitions over to the schools?
In conversations that I've had, it appears that they are looking to scale up to a 50-student number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you clarify, I think maybe I'm getting confused with previous things, how much the City of Urbana is currently putting towards Self-Made Kings or some equivalent? How much the school district is? And then kind of what is that, what is the gap between what's being requested and what is already being allocated? Kind of to help with us understanding the long-term plan.
My understanding of how much the city was providing for the Self-Made Kings program was approximately $6,000. I think it went from 3,000 to 6,000 since I had been here. But that was in partnership with other entities in the community that actually funded the program. The, this position will provide the transitioning and the stability and the dedicated focus. The ARPA funding will be able to pay for that in order for the school district to absorb this program into the school district. They have the resources, they're going to utilize their resources that are available to them to bring programmatic activities and all of the other components of the program from the Self-Made Kings to this group. But they are hoping to partner with us to be able to pay for that position. Because I believe it wasn't budgeted for them to do that. But they are looking, hopefully, we will be able to be funded so that that person can begin working with these students and to start scaling up that program.
So this is a pilot program for three years, and you talk about data collection to determine the effectiveness. Since Self-Made Kings has been in existence for a number of years now, is there data already that exists to talk about the effectiveness of the program?
There has been some data collected. I can say that we've had, you know, since I've been here and the look-back that I've had, I've had about a two-year look-back. That program was only focused on bringing in 12 student participants. And I don't believe they realize the 12 students at any one given time. And so there's not a whole lot of data that was memorialized from that program.
Thank you, Carl, thank you, Carla. I'll have to end your presentation.
Mayor Marlin, I'm sorry. I think we have to change how we're doing our process here. This would be the second presentation where I do not get to ask a question. And several people ask multiple questions in their process. I think we're going to have to let every council member ask a question.
I'm sorry, we were supposed to continue on around. So I thought we had gotten to you last time.
Well, Grace asked the last question on the previous one, because we had gone around several times.
My mistake, I apologize.
But no, but I mean, the first one, it didn't get to me. We stopped. I didn't have a question in that one. But I think we have to make sure that each council member gets a chance to ask at least one question.
For each presentation?
For each presentation. I think it's possible if, Mary Alice, you asked two questions in one, right? Sharice has two and a half. I just think we have to expect that each council member gets to ask one question.
Okay, then I will be better at limiting to one question.
And that would mean both Grace and I should be able to ask a question on this one.
Okay.
If Grace has one.
Mary Alice.
I think we should also flip back and forth. You did it first, but I think it would be good if we flipped in terms of the direction that we're going.
Yeah, I'm fine with it following around and whoever starts. But I do think we have to be aware that each council member may have a question for a presentation.
Understood.
Grace, do you have one?
I always have questions, but I'm not sure if that's what we're doing or not.
Can we start with the next person?
Well, I had a question.
Do you have a question? Go ahead and ask your question.
I did, and that was, when I look at the proposal and talks about getting data and having, being prepared for the school district to take this on, it talks about ending in December, the three-and-a-half years ending in December. And I want to know that the school district is planning to budget in the previous budget cycle, because if you find out the data that you needed in December because if you find out the data that you needed in December and it wasn't budgeted, they won't be ready.
I believe they're going to be looking at enveloping this into their budget prior to the ending of it so that when it starts that they can just continue on. I don't think they want to have a, they want to make sure there is a stopgap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so from here on out, one question per, per turn, and we will do, we'll keep it going, circulating. It may be that not everyone will get to ask a question of every presenter.
And I remember Will saying that we can ask questions via email that you'll be able to send later. That's why, I mean, I've, I've had more than one question.
Absolutely.
And I plan on sending an email, so I think that that's also.
Keep track of your questions that weren't asked or answered, and we'll be able to follow up later. Thank you. This, this is, this is our practice round tonight. Unfortunately, we're, we're practicing on city staff, but it's also practice for us, so thank you for your patience. So, our last question ended with James. We'll, but she has questions in other rounds, so we'll, we'll be back, I promise. Please, please bear with us. Okay. Is the timer ready? You may begin.
Thank you. Staff is proposing utilizing two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to support a roof repair and replacement program for low-income Urbana homeowners. The assistance provided through this proposal will greatly reduce housing costs for low-income Urbana residents and help those in need remain safely in their homes. Since 2021, staff have received more than twenty requests from Urbana residents for assistance repairing or replacing their roof. However, under current regulations, city staff are unable to use existing grant funds for larger home repair projects, such as roof repairs or replacements. Furthermore, there are no roof repair replacement assistance programs currently offered in Champaign County. As a result, this project will address a critical service gap in the community as well as protect the homeowner's residence from damage. Some homeowners have stated they're at risk of losing their homeowner's insurance if the roof is not repaired, so this program will also help protect the asset of the homeowners. Based on data from previous housing rehab programs, city staff estimate that the requested funding amount will support approximately fifteen roof repairs. Assistance will be targeted to low-income households at or below eighty percent of the area median income. City staff will verify income and assets of each client to ensure that assistance is exclusively benefiting low-income residents. City staff has extensive experience managing federal and state grants, including the annual allocations of Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership funding from HUD. In addition, staff has successfully administered housing rehab programs for many years. This project will be the best use of city ARPA funds because it will directly reduce housing costs for low-income Urbana residents that need it the most. Furthermore, this program will enable staff to meet a critical housing need that is not currently addressed by existing local services. Success of this program will be measured by the number of low-income Urbana households that receive assistance at the end of the program year. This project will provide a lasting impact by providing direct rehabilitation assistance to approximately fifteen low-income households, thereby allowing homeowners to remain safely in their homes. The project will improve and sustain high-quality affordable housing in Urbana long after the ARPA funds have run out. This project will be the best use of city ARPA funds because it will directly reduce housing costs for low-income Urbana residents that need it the most. As cost of living continues to rise, low-income homeowners in Urbana face many challenges in maintaining a safe and sustainable living environment. As I stated earlier, since 2021, we've received more than twenty requests from low-income Urbana homeowners for assistance repairing or replacing their roof. This program, as proposed by staff, will provide direct assistance to the homeowners who can't afford to undertake such projects. We are confident that we'll be able to administer this program under the supervision of our existing staff. We have existing and extensive demonstrable experience and expertise managing state and federal grants. We also have relationships with existing contractors who will help us move this program forward. We anticipate completing the project within one year.
We'll move on to questions? One question? Okay, go.
I'm putting a timer on myself. Is this a reimbursement program?
No, we anticipate doing it like we do our current housing programs where we'll take an application, verify that they meet the income guidelines, and then we'll hire a contractor in partnership with the homeowner to see that the work gets done.
Chris?
Sheila, for those of us that don't know what the area median income is, could you maybe estimate what the yearly salary of eighty percent of the area median would be?
Yeah, right off the top of my head, Chris, I think it's around forty thousand. So, a lot of our seniors are way under that amount, and that's, that's who we've been getting the calls from.
Sharice? Chandra?
So, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is for fifteen roof repairs? And if you got less than two-hundred-and-fifty, that would just, what, decrease the number of roofs you would be able to repair?
Right. Yeah, we'll just do it till the money runs out.
Gotcha.
Grace?
Could this be based on Urbana median income, which is very different from county? Because this is not a HUD thing, right? This is from City of Urbana ARPA funds, right?
I'm, I'm not sure what your question is.
Could we base median income off of Urbana instead of the county?
I guess. I hadn't thought of that. Is it, how different is it? And I, I don't want to leave anybody out that's been calling and needing assistance primarily because it's seniors, so where would we get that data, and we'd have to be consistent with it?
Do you, do you have an estimated need? What percentage of the need does fifteen roofs take care of?
We, like I said, we've had probably twenty requests in the last eighteen months. And with the rising cost of, of doing the program, we're anticipating the roof cost being between twelve and fifteen thousand each.
Okay, so, but we don't know if this was an ongoing thing, how long we'd be doing fifteen roofs a year?
We couldn't do it with our existing funding, so we would continue to try to find other grant funds to extend it into the future, but this would meet an immediate need that we, we see in the community right now.
Thank you.
Mary Alice? Any other questions? Chris? Chandra? Grace?
Could you tell us a little bit about the existing roof repair programs or those reimbursements, I think, and about the success of those programs?
We don't do anything by reimbursement because our homeowners just don't have the capacity to do that. So, if, if somebody calls and they need a furnace repair, we go out and, or replacement, we'll go out and take an application, and then we work with a contractor to do the work, and then we pay the contractor on behalf of the homeowner. And I anticipate this will be the same way. Most, most of our lower-income households just don't have ten to fifteen thousand dollars set aside for these type of programs.
I got it.
Okay.
So, you, you said you had roughly twenty requests, but now we're, you're asking for only fifteen roofs. How will you prioritize who gets the funding?
We'll go back and start with the person that was on the list first, and if they qualify and meet, we'll be first come, first served. And if we get to the end of that and we still have money left over, we'll reach out to the public.
So, not by, okay, sorry.
Sharice?
I have one question, with Chandra bringing that up. So, my question is this. If, if you get, if you get through so many funds and you've got like five thousand dollars left over to, to do this, would you, would you be able to work with another entity or combine another grant to actually make that one roof happen?
Sure. We'll try to partner this money with as many other dollars as we can to make it stretch as far as we can.
Okay, thanks.
So, okay, so you're going by who called first, but not who has the most dire need? Like what if, you know, that's how I would think should be prioritized. Could you inspect, you know, whomever first and then sort of prioritize it that way?
Yeah, sure, that's part of the process. And if it's actively leaking in the home, we would want to do that before just an aging roof. If somebody's insurance is going to be canceled because their roof is in bad shape, we would want to do that first. So, there'll be some criteria like that, that the most emergency ones would be done first. We're not just going to drive down the street and replace theirs because it looks old. We, we would want to make sure that it does need redone.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Okay, sure.
And I would just add that for a lot of those projects we were not able to undertake originally, we did have inspections done, and that's how we were able to determine that it was too big of a project for our current program. So, we do have a lot of that data still that we would use as we go back to reassess the projects.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Grace, just to get at your question, you want the Urbana median family income? What data source do you want us to use?
I don't have a preference. I've just been doing a Google answer on US Census, I think. Yeah, I guess recent census data.
Came out two days ago.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Sheila.